This meeting is ordered at six thirty. Today is January the sixteenth, two thousand and thirteen. We're going to have our invocations by Andy.
Thank you, Mayor. May we bow our heads, please? Lord, we ask you that you bless this meeting, that the outcome be positive for our citizens and our community. We ask for a special request that you put in the minds and the hearts of our young children, that life is worth living, whether it's good times or bad times. We ask you to watch over all our young people in their community and throughout our state and our nation. This name, we ask in your name, amen.
Okay, we have established quorum. We have Councilman Lodonis, Councilman Miller, and Councilman Garetto. Now everybody please stand when we head to the meetings for the votes as well. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored to Texas, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible. Okay, we're going to start with Riverbend TIP. And Mr. Plummer, you'll be present.
Yes, ma'am. Each of you should have a little summary that I put together. And what I've tried to do is outline just a few things, and as I go through this, y'all feel free to interrupt me, ask questions. I've tried to keep this relatively brief, and so we can expand and go into any detail that we want to. But feel free to, and let me, and let's go through them. The tax increment reinvestment zone number one is a zone of the city created pursuant to chapter three of the Texas Tax Plan. It was created in two thousand and one. It enables the zone to capture the incremental increase in property taxes from the participating jurisdiction and deposit them into a special fund that is then set aside to be used to pay for public improvements within the zone. In this case, you have the city, you have the county, you have Evergreen, Undermere Water Conservation District, and the Woodson Memorial Hospital District participating. The school district did not, and the school of schools generally never participate in these transactions because of the way they are funded. The zone is set up to expire in two thousand and thirty-one. The zone is run by a nine-member board, which is created per se according to statute, and will get into the actual board and how they can be appointed, et cetera, at the end of this. That board, however, only really makes recommendations to you as the city council at the end of the decade. They can run the zone, decide what's going to be reimbursed, but the city had to bless this entire transaction start. And so the city has had an involvement. Are you, sir?
Oh, yes, sir.
I'm good. The zone is run essentially according to what's called a project plan and a finance plan. In this case, we approved our project plan and our finance plan in two thousand and three. That is about a twenty or thirty-page document that supposedly lays out exactly what's going to happen within the zone. It lays out what financially is expected to happen as the date you enter into it. So in two thousand and three, we laid out a plan. It's for the development of four hundred and sixty-one acres. It was supposed to have nine hundred and four single-family homes. There was a public golf course. It was originated by Riverbend Community. The estimated cost of public improvement is about eighteen million dollars. Riverbend Community Corporation is a nonprofit local government corporation that is created, was created by the city to manage the bid on behalf of the city. It is just another on behalf of governmental entity. Its board consists of the board of the zone. Frankly, the reason that the local government corporation was used is because if you had a local government corporation, managers and private developers did not have to do the public bid on the public improvements. And that is a pretty standard structure. The developer puts in the improvements himself and not have to go through the whole bid process. That was created at the same time it was created to aid in the development of the zone. Ultimately, they issued premium six of bonds in two thousand and seven, which we'll get to in a minute, and its board directors decided. If you turn to the next page, I just did a brief outline of the history of this project because I think it's important that everybody understand that this was intended to be an economic development project. It was intended to bring citizens into the city, and it was intended to enhance through sales tax collection, sales, simply help the city grow. And it was begun in that format with a group called the Hawkins. And in two thousand and one, the Hawkins came in and started the project, and they invested a significant amount of money in two thousand and one. Then in two thousand and two, there was a flood, and the flood essentially wiped out all of the golf course along the project by the river, basically the backside of that project. They eventually, they used up all their working capital to repair the golf course. We could not issue loans because there was no ongoing development at that time. We went ahead and entered into documents in two thousand and three. In two thousand and six, they got refinanced. They were actually in default in the sense that they had not paid their taxes. They had obvious cash flow problems in terms of paying people around town. And they went to a bank, got a twelve million dollar loan, recapitalized their business, and began to produce houses. By two thousand and seven, they could demonstrate that they expended over twenty-five million dollars of cost. They seem to have stabilized, and we did a bond issue in two thousand and seven. I'm going to introduce Christopher Allison, and let him describe the bond issue in two thousand and seven, and what it was used for, and where we went from there.
Good evening. I'm Christopher Allison. I'm with Emmy Allison and Company in San Antonio. We're a local investment banking firm, and underwrote the two thousand and seven bond issue, which was a three-point-six-million-dollar bond issue. The bond issue essentially was going to pay for completion of the facilities at the golf course, the completion of the clubhouse, bringing water lines up to the roundabout and extending them to the edges of each of the other parcels. In addition, it was to finance the construction of parcel G as well as parcel C and D. Parcel C and D were never even started. Parcel G was started and not completed, and the Ricks here have completed it at this The bonds were sold to approximately twenty-nine individuals and a bank trust department. In two thou-- I'll skip forward a little, forward a couple pages, and then Jim will come back. In two thousand and eleven, we did do an amendment on the bonds. Development had not occurred in the district. The district had used up a reserve fund that was established when the bonds were issued. We went to each of the individual bondholders and asked them to reduce the interest payment. It was at seven and three-quarters percent, down to three and a quarter percent for a three-year period. And we got consent from one hundred percent of the bondholders to do that. And that restructuring on very rare occasions do, occurs, but usually there'll be one bondholder of fund that you're negotiating with, not of both or two parties. So it was unique in that aspect of all of the individuals involved in getting them all on board. And please feel free to ask me any questions at any time I need.
And I'm going to ask you to turn back now. I apologize, there are no more pages, but probably the most important thing that's outlined is the last bulletin on the page that has Emmy Allison's amendment for the bond. And that is that the city has no liability in these bonds. These are not general fund bonds. They're not obligations of the city, except to the extent that the city receives money and puts it in the TIP fund.
So, yeah, in fact, the, it's a true statement, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if the payments on those bonds, okay, through two thousand and thirty-one are being made with property tax dollars, okay, that would have come to the city had it not been for this agreement, okay? And that's the clarity piece in here, that it's property tax dollars on that property that is paying for this bond, whether the builder completes or the Riverbend Community Corporation, who the bonds were issued to, I think that's who they were issued to?
No, they were issued by the entity to the twenty-nine holder.
Okay, to the twenty-nine holder. But that liability remains on the city.
Okay, say that again.
Those tax dollars, that liability, those tax dollars remain on the city.
They remain, yes.
Because of the agreement that is in place, those dollars are committed to these bonds.
That's correct. Every incremental tax dollar that was out there, that it's city increment, that it's county increment, or Evergreen, or hospital increment, is in this bond and will remain there and be used to pay debt service on the bonds. And if you ever get enough houses built to get beyond the debt service on the bonds, then the developer will be eligible to get reimbursed for additional infrastructure. So in effect, when we set this deal up and we agree that all of the income, all of the taxes off that property would bill into this fund and be used essentially for that bond since that one. And so if you'll turn the page, we'll go to the two thousand and nine, it was actually the fault on personally, not on the bonds, but on the lien that Hawkins had with his lender. There was a company called Stark Investments that ultimately controlled that loan, and Stark Investments then foreclosed on the Riverbend development and took over all of Hawkins' position. They tried to market the property, and they were finding that because the property was in default and continued to be in default under the TIP, that they were having difficulties marketing the property. They came to us and asked us to essentially enter into a settlement agreement with them so that the developer would continue to have the advantage of the TIP. We had bonds outstanding, and it was pretty clear that the tax dollars were then committed from that property for extended period of time. And so the council at the time felt like it was important to try and work with this developer to make this successful. And we entered into a settlement agreement, and the first time we had a Stark agreed to fix the lift station. There was a lift station that was in disrepair. The lift station was located at a point that it was felt like if it wasn't maintained and run properly, it could theoretically endanger the city system. It was felt like there wasn't any choice but to get that into the good repair. So that was done. They paid the city for about twenty-six thousand dollars for park street improvements. They agreed to a value of the golf course of three million and six, so that the TIP dollars were fairly stable. They agreed to complete the street repairs and section G, street utilities, and the city released Stark and waived any defaults in the TIP so the TIP could stay in the funds. At that point, the property was then sold to Jan Hayden Ricks as part of Mr. Hayden's estate. She was the executor. And we have a lead here, and we'll let him give us an update on where we went from there. In two thousand and eleven, we did the bond of the much-diverted bond for it. And actually, I'll ask Mr. Ricks to give us, he kind of fills in on what he has done in the way that he knows of the project, because he's done quite a bit, and so I'll let you go through that.
First of all, under the purchase agreement from Stark to Hayden, we assumed the Stark liabilities for the lift station and for the street repair, and section G was included in the purchase. So we completed first the lift station repair, and the city has since approved it through their engineer and has taken over the lift station. We completed the street repair, and that's also been approved and now deeded to the city through the last acceptance of plat G. We went into, we went into G. It had supposedly water and sewer, and we were to do electrical and road. And it took a long, long time to complete because it had a lot of problems with the existing work that was there. We had sewer collapse, and we had water lines in places they weren't supposed to be. And so before we could do the road, most of that was discovered by Phelps during the electrical run. And so luckily, the road wasn't done yet. So we ran cameras to the sewer, we repaired it, we ran tests again, and then paved the road, and presented the city with all of our findings. They approved the road and the sewer, and eventually the plat of G. The plat of G was approved and recorded about, it was approved back in, I think, November, but actually wasn't all signed off on and recorded until January tenth. So I have taken my first two earnest money contracts for G and to sell the first two lots in G this week. Couldn't do anything with it until the plat was filed. I had rebuilt two completed spec homes in the old section A, and neither one of them have sold. One is leased, the other is for sale. I have a third spec home that's about eighty percent complete for construction. We had one unfinished slab in the area that was ours, so we completed that house, and that one is now rented. In fact, that's where my son lives. So we have concentrated our efforts first on the obligations that were part of the Stark arrangement, and second, on the restaurant and the maid facility. We built a pro shop, freestanding pro shop to separate it from the restaurant, and added about fifteen hundred square foot kitchen, remodeled the banquet room, remodeled the restaurant and patio, turned it into a nice facility, and have been operating it since about late September. And I'm encouraged by the support we've gotten so far from the Forestville community, and I think this thing is going to eventually make a go. But as we're discovering, the development end is a slow, tedious process. It takes a lot of time and a lot of staying power. And we can see what happened with the first developer, and we don't want to make the same mistake, so we've tried to move cautiously and use cash and not borrowing. And we hope to continue along those directions. The only downside with that is the fact that the tax revenues don't come in as fast as they could if we were a national developer. We definitely will entertain any other national developers to come in. We've talked to a few and have not made any commitment to date, but that's always a possibility. I think that it's a beautiful piece of property. I think it's going to be a big asset to this community, and I would like to see it to fruition. That's about it for my end.
The, there's a couple things that I want to point out. Your interests are somewhat aligned, well, maybe more accurately, the bondholder's interest is somewhat aligned with Mr. Ricks' interest. They need to produce houses, and that's frankly your interest as well. And so this project has gone along, has been a continuous effort by this city to try to make it successful, and because your interests have always been aligned, and it would be beneficial to continue to try and do that if, in fact, they can produce a significant number of houses, they'll begin, they'll get to the point where they can pay the debt service. Theoretically, they can repay themselves for the public infrastructure they put in. But the truth is, is that that's likely to be a backend repayment to them. When we ran the numbers on this, it was anticipated that there would have to be forty to fifty new houses there every year, beginning in two thousand and eleven, and going to, I think, fourteen about.
Yeah, about five, five years.
Yeah. Obviously, we haven't had, I don't think, there's been five new houses until this year. And so it clearly puts you behind what was expected in the debt service funding. There is enough money in the reserve funds to continue to pay these bonds, and we will collect enough tax dollars to continue to pay these bonds until September of two thousand and fourteen. In September of two thousand and fourteen, if there has not been significant development, there will have to either be a restructuring, or there will be a default of the bonds. And, or it may be that there will be a default and then a restructuring to make it work. If there were significant development between now and then, then the bonds could be puppy. That significant development could be either a significant number of houses, or an apartment project, or something else to drive a root search about. But right now, it doesn't appear that's going to happen in a time in a fashion because you're always delaying when you're... And so even if there was a national builder who came in and sold fifty lots in two thousand and thirteen, you wouldn't actually see that money until the end of two thousand and fourteen, and you'd have a short lag where there'd be a problem. And so that is where this is likely headed. I think anything that we can do to assist them that doesn't have an actual cost to the city is something that we should continue to try and do, and try and make this a successful project. I wish I could sit here and tell you I had a miracle solution to bring houses to that facility, but I think it's just a market-driven issue. And I think quite frankly, Mr. Hawkins did such a poor job of developing on an early stage, the project developed to a reputation that's been very hard to overcome. And I think that's going to be the challenge to make it happen, is changing that reputation. So, but it's not, not a liability issue for the city. A liability the city can have out there is they've accepted some public streets, so they'll like to maintain those streets just like every other street. The only other thing I wanted to cover is the board. I've got a list of here who the board is. The chairman's Brett Ross, vice chairman's Paul Sacks, secretary of administration is Sarah, and then you've got the directors who represent the various parties. The statute dictates who appoints the board. The, each taxing jurisdiction gets to appoint a member. The senator and representative get to appoint a member. The county gets to appoint a member, and you appoint the rest. The interesting part about that is that if you turn the page, which you'll see, is the city appoints these, have to be a landlord in that zone or an employer agent as the landlord. And so what we did was, in our development agreement, we got the developer to agree that they would appoint a person as their agent, because they were a landlord, so the city would have a representative that could be somebody outside of the neighborhood. And the developer's always been kind enough to appoint whoever we asked to be their agent. So if you go back to the list, you only have two people out of the neighborhood on this list. Brett Ross lives in the neighborhood, or at least did it, and I believe, or so will the A House do. Bill Martin did it, and that should be good.
Paul Sacks will be living out there. I don't know if he does it or not.
I don't know if he does it or not. The board has a two-year term. Technically, their terms are up. You can reappoint, you can change them. That's, I think, you, as far as this year. They were reappointed, yeah, in eleven, I believe. You'll have to get your staff to check the records, but get the exact dates. The other thing is the city appoints the chairman. And so, of course, it's a bit unusual, and the rest of the officers are elected on the Then it would be pretty routine, frankly, to have a developer appointed on this board. So the developer can agree and have a say, and they'll, they'll have control. That would be pretty typical of a TIP. We can go through finances of the TIP if you want to, but the truth is that they're all monitored, audited. I think they've all been pretty up to date. While Brett Ross is the president of the organization, the truth is Paul Sacks is the guy who has had the involvement over the life of the TIP.
How often do they meet?
When we ask them to, try to do it once a year, just to get an update and keep them active.
Mr. Sacks reported to this council, he stated that the last time they had met was in two thousand and nine.
Yeah, it's not, but March of two thousand and eleven is when they last met.
I have several questions. First of all, I want to say that to Mr. Ricks, I certainly see the Riverbend community and the entire development as an asset to the community. There's no doubt in my mind that it is that. And I personally have seen the improvements out there over the last six to nine months. The improvements haven't helped my golf game, but I have noticed the improvements out there, and we see that every day with people talking about the facility. And I think your, your new restaurant is going to do wonders for the reputation of that facility out there and that community. that facility out there and that community. I know a number of people that have talked about it and as we start to maybe see a little bit more development out there, that would drive some things. My concerns are not directed at that. My concerns are that of councilmen and that I have the fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers in this agreement, whether it was committed to by previous council or not. As a result, I'm going to ask some very specific questions of you. Mr. Plummer. One, you said there was a project plan and a finance plan that was about twenty-five pages. We've been unable to locate that anywhere. I would like to have a copy of that document.
No problem. No problem at all. There's, there's actually just, from a listing perspective, I need to just send you a set of documents because there's more than just the project plan and the finance plan. There's a development agreement, there's a project plan, a finance plan, there's a settlement agreement, there's an assignment of a settlement agreement, there is a management agreement between the two government entities, there's an interlocal agreement.
Right. Those are the documents that I'd like to see, just so that I have them as a base point. I certainly don't want to be talking out of turn and I tend to like to read the stuff myself and ask the questions myself.
Now, one thing you do need to understand, they were all Larry Hawkins vintage, so they're two thousand and four, so they don't reflect reality as exists today. And we talked about, you know, do we need to change them? And the honest to God truth is that it's expensive to draft all those documents and nobody was doing paperwork.
I'm getting there, I'm getting there. Through, through my questions, I think we'll get there. In this settlement agreement that you talked about, I guess the original one between...
Stark.
To Stark.
Yep.
The city waived the defaults to the tip.
Correct.
What were those defaults that the city waived?
The development agreement mandated that the developer produce so many houses, you will produce on this kind of schedule. They obviously had not done that. And it was a requirement, I think, that maybe some of the streets would be done by the end of day. There were just clear development requirements that were not that, that the city could have declared a default, eliminated the tip. But if you eliminated the tip, you couldn't eliminate it until the bonds were paid off. And so as a practical matter, it didn't do much good for us to eliminate the tip because the bonds were out.
Understood. Do those same, in the renegotiation of this, and it appears that it obviously was renegotiated because many of those same defaults that you're talking about, building so many houses, did not continue into Rick's sale in this?
No. Now, we, there was a clear requirement on the prior developer to do these things, but there could not be a requirement on new developer that had never sold a property. And so you simply had to waive the defaults that occurred to date, which were mostly the development defaults, and it became totally self-performing. If you went out and spent money on public infrastructure, you would have the ability to get reimbursed. The only way you got reimbursed is if you built houses. So if you didn't build the houses, you're never going to get reimbursed. And so they were not the same requirements and I don't even know if I could parse through the agreement and sit down and say at this point what continued to exist and what didn't exist.
Will the documents that you'd be sending me, will I be able to go through those documents and see those differences?
You will, but effectively you're going to have to sit down and figure out what we waived back then and what might not have, what not, might not have been required to have been done by then. And if there were any still any obligations, yeah, you could go through it for a minute. You're not going to, by doing that, the only thing that you could possibly achieve is to cut, is to cut off Mr. Rick's ability to get reimbursed. You cannot cut off the bond liability.
Not looking to cut off the bond liability. I like clearly defined requirements and we see this across the city today in a number of contracts or a number of projects, let me rephrase that, a number of projects that are ongoing that are clearly without a defined scope, without an existing contract, so I...
And there will be no, this will be one of those when you renew it because everything was already defaulted on. And so there is not a defined scope that will say that the Ricks have the obligation to do any specific activity. It is merely a matter of if they do something, then they could come back and seek reimbursement, but it would require amendments to the documents. And we look at the settlement agreement, that's where you need to start. The settlement agreement will tell you that we had an obligation to negotiate within a good faith with regard to future public improvements, that's all it says. Because we weren't, we weren't agreeing to give them any money and we weren't, and they weren't agreeing to what they would do. And so it was simply to, in effect, keep the tip alive and, and give a developer the opportunity to come in and take advantage of the tip. And unless a developer came in and really built a lot of houses, there's not a lot of backend left to where they could recoup bonds. And so there may not be any value to a developer in this tip at this point. And so we didn't want to go through the cost to renegotiate all of this at the time we did this transaction.
Next question. Mr. Rick's, when you talked about your purchase, kind of almost got the feeling that you didn't purchase the entire development. What part of this original zone that was in this original, or this reinvestment zone that was the original Hox project that became the Stark's project that is now in Rick's hand, what kind of differences there? Is there property out there that is, was not purchased by Ricks that was still part of this zone?
We purchased everything that Stark foreclosed on. There were five houses and two lots in G that were foreclosed on by Frost Bank and there were two slabs in A that were foreclosed on by Frost Bank. So those nine tracts are all that was within the zone that we didn't purchase unless it was owned by another homeowner already. There were fifty, approximately fifty homes in there that were owned by homeowners, but there were, there were two slabs that...
So about nine or ten lots out of the whole thing that you did.
Yeah, right. Okay.
Well, there's also a problem right away that came up with the city of that.
Came a broken track.
Part of a hiking bike trail there. When Mr. Sacks briefed us, he went through the, an issue of property valuation and I don't remember the years, I have to go back through my notes, that the appraised value was higher than, I believe, he said the homeowners association or the community thought that it shouldn't have been. And as a result of this lawsuit, property values were returned to a certain level. And can you give me a little bit more information on that that he's talking about?
In, prior to two thousand and nine, they had allowed the property values to the course at the appraisal district without contest. And part of the reason they did that is because it was showing greater dollars coming into the tip.
Who's they allowed the property values to?
Hawkins, he was the owner of the property. And so up to two thousand and nine, the golf course land was valued at approximately five million six. The purchase in two thousand and ten, the property was valued at three million six and that was more than fair market value type of cost. So there was a two million dollar differential right there. There was an agreement in the settlement that the Hicks would not contest the value lower than three million six. The belief was that the appraisal district would adopt the three million six as the value because that was a purchase price value. Instead, the appraisal district came in with a much, much higher value. And Mr. Rick's went in and contested it through the appraisal district process and nothing to do with us. And so the value was then significantly lowered and the value of the houses have also gone down. In that property, there were quite a few foreclosures that occurred and the value of the homes that have been sold has decreased. It was once at a nine million nine value and in two thousand and eleven it was at a six million seven value, which I don't know that that reflects just the recession or what it does.
But there's no legal action taken against the appraisal district by a homeowners association or by Rick's or anybody in this? It was just the normal appellate process?
As far as I know, and I do have to tell you, to Mr. Rick's credit, we had a contract that said you won't contest below this level. And he did in fact contest and it wasn't for the people at that level. And in order to make the tip whole, he stepped up and made a payment as if the taxes had been at the higher level. So he paid voluntarily more tax money, he paid by contract more taxes than he would have otherwise been required to do. And so that agreement continues on, I think, for a couple more years, three more years. And, but there's, there was nothing that I'm aware of in form of anything extraordinary litigation, it was just people going through the normal appraisal process. So hopefully it will come back up some.
Which leads me to my next question is, you say that there are enough reserves to maintain the debt service till September twenty fourteen. Would an increase in the appraised value of the area have an impact on that?
It could. Let me, it would certainly help them get closer to paying the debt service on the bonds.
Well, I understand, you know, September of twenty fourteen is a long ways difference between December of twenty thirty-one.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, which leads to the next most important question, is you have said that, you know, that it is costly to redo these agreements.
Right.
Okay. What can we as the entities involved in this, i.e. the city, the hospital, the county and the district, the water district, through this interlocal agreement or through this reinvestment zone, do to ensure that this is successful? You know, so that we don't end up flat footed in two thousand and fourteen, looking at having to either renegotiate this debt or renegotiate the agreement? If we're, you know, what are we, we're twenty months ahead of that now, what, what should we be doing now? What can we do now? What can we do with this agreement to assist the developer and the community to be successful with this? Okay. Does it mean we have to rewrite an interlocal agreement? Does it mean we have to rewrite a tip? I don't know the answer to the question. Is there something we can be doing? Is, is the government entities that have, through previous administrations, said, use the tax dollars we were going to receive to be successful? Well, we've made that obligation. Okay, what can we do to ensure that success?
They, and I'll ask Mr. Rick's to help me, but the only thing you can do is to create taxable value on the ground. And so the question becomes, what can we do to help drive sales of homes or create other investment in that community? I do think anything you can do to help them repair the reputation of the community, I think anything you can do to try to encourage some of your other local builders to have an interest in the project. If you had two builders who went out there and were to build and turnover, pretty much normal building turnover, something in the neighborhood of ten to twenty homes each a year, you're going to get much closer to being able to continue to sustain this, this bond transaction and you're going to break down houses. Theoretically, you could, you could encourage an apartment project on site and that would bring a large infusion of taxable value.
On site, meaning in that?
In that zone.
In that zone.
Right. But at the end of the day, it's really going to be all about how do you sell houses, one way or another? How do you generate taxable value inside of that zone? I do think one of the things that is going to become important, when you had a bunch of houses that Mr. Hawkins had not constructed in a, in a format where they were, they were in great shape or after a given period of time and there were foreclosures in the property, it ended up in a situation where it's hard to do new construction because your value, your appraised values are low and you can't get the appraisal you need to do the new construction. And so I think one of the things that's going to help is doing some appraisals, maybe having some front open the property so that a builder can get the upper appraisal that he needs if the construction can get.
So what happens despite best efforts? If in September of twenty fourteen or December of twenty fourteen, there is a default? What happens?
Mr. Allison's going to look even paler than he does today.
Well, I, I, obviously this is going to have an impact on the city.
I don't know if that's true. Let me explain why, because I, the city won't have an obligation to step up and make a payment. Theoretically, you're going to get maybe a newspaper article about it, but it's not going to, it should not affect your rating on your debt if you have it.
I'm not worried about that. I'm worried about, you know, if we have a development out there and our developer goes broke, we've got residents out that are in the city limits. We have a golf course that is within the city limits, okay? We have a couple of businesses that exist within the city limits. It will have an impact on the city, it will have an impact on us from a perspective of sales tax dollars, it will have an impact on ultimately appraised values of the property out there, and it will have an impact on us, you know, in providing services out there. So, yeah, do we got to write a check for it? No. Will it have an impact on the city? Absolutely. So I say that kind of across the board.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Plummer, but I don't think the bond default will affect me as the developer.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm going to continue to operate a golf course, a restaurant and build houses and put in utilities and open up more sections as sections fill up. It's unfortunate that the stigma will be attached to this development into this city, even though neither one of us is going to financially be responsible for it. So I, I think that that's something that maybe you're not understanding as far as does this bond go attached to that piece of dirt? That doesn't happen and it doesn't attach to me or to that development.
Yeah. But I do understand that piece of it, probably more painfully than you're aware. There are a certain amount of tax dollars that the city has committed to that debt. Whether we are writing the check for it or they're taking it through, you know, payroll deduction, okay, or not, this is still a debt that the city is paying. The tax comes in to the city. And then this percentage or that tax that is paid but within that zone is transferred or put directly into the TIF fund, okay, as part of our books. This is money that the city sees coming through. It's just, it's paying. So it first came through us and then it's going to pay the debt. I'm painfully aware of that. Whether we default or whether you default or the Riverbend Corporation defaults or not, we still have that responsibility to pay the debt, okay, through twenty thirty one or until the debt is paid, okay? And if, let's go worst case scenario in here, we see the default, we don't build the houses, we don't get the appraised value, okay? And we are not generating the revenue. We're not generating the tax base to pay the debt. Then that debt goes beyond, okay, through a restructure or whatever. So I'm painfully aware of how the debt is paid. Whether it's an additional piece that the city has to pay or not, really isn't, you know, isn't going to happen. It's a question of how long are we going to pay it, okay? And till twenty thirty one or beyond till the debt is paid. I understand that piece, okay? But should they default? What I'm trying to avoid is that, you know, is if, this is an agreement that was agreed to by an administration long before any of us sat here at this table. What do we need to do to ensure that that is successful? Is there anything that we can do? Doesn't sound like it.
There's probably not anything that you can do correctly to overlook that. That is purely the function of how many houses get built and how many tax dollars they're paying. One of the things that is going to be contrary to what your citizens want would be to get a recognition that the value of the houses out there, the tax rolls is too low, if impact it is, but that you don't really want to go out and have your citizens' taxes raised because of campaign you started, that probably not be very wanted.
And we're not involved in the valuation period. I mean, in that this government has chose to contract with a third party for that, you know, for assessing property as well as assessing equipment value in businesses. That's probably a safe move for them, okay? I am concerned at the function of this board and the reporting of this. You've explained a lot of things here today and I appreciate your time and I appreciate everybody's time in dealing with my ignorance of the subject. I do believe that it is time to refresh this board, if in fact these are two-year appointments, in that many of these appointments are probably inappropriate today, a couple I can see, okay? Some because of recent events and others simply because of time. And would it be up to this city to contact Senators Aferini to contact the hospital or the county to refresh their appointments?
No, it's not up to you per se in the sense that you don't have any legal duty or obligation, but I doubt that they recognize that their appointments were two-year appointments. And it may be appropriate to remind them just to reconsider if the two-year term is up, if that's what you'd like to do, but it's clearly going to be their appointment. In terms of your appointments, obviously you can do something with that, with the recognition that the new appointee has to be a.
Landowner or an agent.
Or an agent of land. And so you can definitely go through that process.
Can we as a city? You offered to show us some of the finances of that. I am definitely interested in taking a look at the financials, if only for my own sake. But so that this board of city appointees comes to the council on a regular basis, you know, to let us know what is going on, how things are progressing. You know, the simple little report that we received from Mr. Sack a couple of months ago now, this was back in November, was isle. And this is a gentleman who's been coming religiously to city council meetings for two years, you know, that these were issues that this is how tax dollars were being utilized. It was isle. And I don't think we should be in that position. One of the challenges from previous administrations, wrong, right, or indifferent, was not being a hundred percent informative and won't even go down the road of transparency. I think our job as a government is to be informative to the people and to be informative to the landowners and to the taxpayers as to how things are being managed and would like to see a routine report from this board, maybe not quarterly, but certainly semi-annually to look at, hey, these are the tax dollars that we're receiving, this is where we've changed from previous years, here's where our mark on the wall is with this debt service. So that come September of twenty fourteen, nobody's caught flat footed.
Christopher, do we do audits on any of the TIF funds?
No.
Is the TIF fund audited? I mean, I know we have the TIF fund, but does that account show?
Well, we don't really have a TIF fund in our books.
Pardon me?
We do not have a TIF fund in our books.
We do not?
No. It is, it needs to be in the back of the financial statements, I believe.
Okay, well, then that's where I'm seeing it, it's from the back of the financials.
It's not in there. It has never been reported.
So we need to see some sort of accounting on that. And you say it's never been audited? That's alarming too.
I don't believe so. I've pointed out a couple of minor errors that I've found before, but I don't believe it's.
Is there no requirement?
It's part of the city's funds and so it should be part of the city audit, but it's not, it's not part of the city's normal books and records.
Right.
It may not be that.
That's through the tax office and we do not audit that portion.
We need to backtrack this piece of it somehow to find out, does that money that is put into this TIF fund come through the city before it gets to the TIF fund or is it the assessor's office who then says, oh, well, this much money goes to the TIF fund?
They do that. They make a check out to the city, but it is for TIF funds. It is the portion that they collected that belongs to the TIF.
But you're correct. It is, does get labeled.
Does get labeled where?
Where? At the tax assessor's office.
So the dollars never funnel through the city's books?
Not in that.
Not in the usual sense, but the answer is yes, they do.
Unstuck through us, but they are not.
Then they should be a part of our audit.
I'm totally in agreement. They should be showing somewhere on your audit.
It's basically similar to a component unit, like your city and your.
Okay. Well, then on Friday, when we meet with Ms. Wagner, let's make it a point that as one of those expanded scope pieces, that we include this TIF as part of our audit.
And I think the way, I'm not sure this is how Jim would express it or how Laura would express it, to me, it's a deferred or a, I mean deferred is not the right word. It's a. I'm looking for a word meaning relinquished. It's not released, it's not relinquished, but it's a fund that comes technically to the city that the city says is yours.
Through this agreement, yes. Okay, through this agreement.
But it should show up for some kind of footnote.
Well, but we're also talking about taxpayer dollars. In the basic sense of this, we're talking about taxpayer dollars and I'm alarmed to say that, okay, well, we don't have an audit trail to taxpayer dollars. And we need to ensure that we have an audit trail to any taxpayer dollars, be them four A, four B component funds, be them taxpayer or proprietary funds from a water and sewer fund or something or a garbage piece. We have an audit trail to that. We have that responsibility to the landowners as a government, at the very least. So I will make point of that on Friday with our auditor who's going to, or with our audit committee.
We've actually been talking about that. We and her talked about that Monday and I knew this was going to be and there's some things we need to, we do need to iron out.
Well, that was some of the things, you know, we had talked about in that audit committee and I don't need to rehash that, but you know, it's not the, yeah, we've done some great things and we've got a great auditor and we've got a great comptroller and it's these holes that pop up all of a sudden that are alarming to me, that we've gone all these years and oops, we've never done this. Did nobody ever ask the question? I find that very disconcerting that we get to this point and these questions show up. From my perspective, I think I'm informed, I look forward to the documents that you're going to be sending me. And Mr. Ricks, anything that this city can do to help you, you know, that we can do to promote the facility, to do that, I know I, as a business owner, have taken a number of clients out to your place and referred a number of clients to your place. I have builders who are clients of mine and I have referred them out there, particularly when this new plant got approved, I became very aware of it and sent several out there that way. I think it is a great asset to the community and I appreciate your tenacity.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you.
Just one comment, long before I began, Laura and the city, I guess two thousand and two thousand and one, I discussed it with you briefly, Jim. When Hawk was getting all this in motion, there was an issue about the building community and Hawk was adamant, and I don't know how much this affects you now, but at the time I was consulted about whether or not this is appropriate from a monopoly point of view. Hawk was very adamant that they would build all their own units and exclude all local developers or national developers or statewide developers or whatever and Hawk would market all that own stuff. So it was.
No, we're not taking that.
No, I'm not saying you're not, but I want to just mention something that maybe seconds.
Can you pause for just a second?
Anyway, the point I'm trying to make is that there's a residual, I think, bad taste and I don't mean this as negative to you, I'm just saying I think it's out there, where a number of the builders wanted to participate with Hawk at the beginning because Hawk had this perceived notion of how he wanted the houses to look, but more importantly maybe how he wanted to build them because he thought he was a builder. He excluded everybody else from being a participant. So whether you were a large builder or a small builder or a medium sized builder or any kind of builder, most of the builders had just made a mental note that Riverbend is off limits and not part of their scope of vision. And I think to some extent the realty community did the same thing.
Yes, definitely.
And you asked the question, Congressman, whether or not there's something we can do. Maybe this is really more directed to the chamber, but there is a habit that's developed that Riverbend is over here and the rest of the community develops over here and the two don't come together, except maybe somebody will go over and eat at the restaurant if it doesn't close early or whatever. And I'm not speaking about your closing early, but the prior people had a habit of changing their closing hours erratically. But that might be some area where promotionally, some positive things could be done to get the builders' community to relook or to look at the fact that they're invited or encouraged or sought after, whatever the right word is.
That would be very helpful. I started knocking on Realtor doors and trying to let the Realtor community know that we weren't going to be exclusive and the builders I don't know personally and would welcome your assistance to put them in touch with us so we can talk to them about the opportunities there because it is not closed. We are prequalifying builders and we have restrictive covenants that we would like to inform them about, but we're open to anybody who. Our only control is that we're going to approve the plans, is what I'm trying to say, before they're built.
And I'm going to reiterate what Lou is saying. A number of builders that I have spoken with have believed that what Lou's saying, that I guess this was the Hawk standard, if you will, is still in place. That there's two or three that, many of the builders that I work with that reiterating, no, they won't let me build my plans, I have to build theirs, you know, various comments like that that have come across. So might share that. Just to share that, maybe there could be some marketing you could do differently to builders that would support, maybe get them more, a little bit more involved.
The other thing that Mary and I made a note to each other, or she made a note to me, and it came out in your colleague we appear, is, you know, once those comps go down, okay, it sounds good that the comps go down because that means theoretically somebody's getting a house for a better value, okay? And so from the point of view of the house purchaser, immediately you think, well, if I can beat somebody out of a house that I'd pay a hundred and ninety thousand for and I get it for a hundred and forty five, you know, that's a good thing for me, okay? Generally speaking, in just one-on-one, that is a good thing. But the one thing that's happened is, is we've got kind of a stigma issue here within the banking community and I know this is a fact because when they send out somebody to pre, not prequalify, but to qualify you when you've got a contract and if all the comps around there are ten, twenty, thirty, forty percent below the rest of the city and the banker says, I'm going to have my appraiser go out there and look at what's out there. And the only thing that really a fair comp with Riverbend is probably Riverbend, although you go over the hill, but probably you're kind of stuck with, if you're talking about financing you for Riverbend, they're probably going to say you got to look at another Riverbend property. And so then you get a Wells Fargo or a Falls City Bank or a First National Bank who says, well, our appraiser under the new standards says the comp is this. And so when you get that eighty-five percent rule stuck at you, it's eighty-five percent of one twenty-five, not eighty-five percent of one eighty. And that makes it hard to finance. And I don't know the answer to it, but I'm just telling you, I've been there with both clients and myself and if your appraisers don't show the comparable value as in the range you want, you don't get it financed.
And on a Realtor side of this, I can tell you that that's a bit of a bad development. that being a bad development and everything has hurt a lot. And it has brought down the home values. And exactly like we said, when we do comps, that's what comes out. So that's where the new builds come in, that they have to appraise at a higher value so they can be sold at that value to undo what's over there. Because they're going to compare even your foreclosures. And those appraisals, they're not from this area. They come from Seguin, Austin, New Brownsville, don't know anything about the area. And that's where they hurt us. You know, and that hurts you.
You're trying to get a message out to the community. I mean, there's this great local paper who's really willing to work with you. Leave a business card. We'll talk.
Was that Seguin, was that?
That's, that's. Call those guys.
You should visit with them so they can do a story on you.
That's Wilson County News.
We can absolutely do it.
Yeah, so the lager, you're okay. Except these ought to get the cap on the lager.
Get the cap off. Talking about Wilson County News.
Anybody have any questions? I need to use my dapple again. We end the meeting at.